All right, welcome everybody. We're going to call the order of the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, September 19th, 2022. Under General Business, we've got the roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Wasowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Wonski.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean. We have a form.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. Got a few announcements. A couple of good events over this past week. Just actually just yesterday, I worked my way back. At University Park, Global Friends had a community picnic, which was really well-attended, great weather, great day, happy to see that one. All True had their gala on the 17th and was able to raise a lot of money, which was great to see. Special Olympics on Saturday was great. They had the soccer and the statewide soccer and bocce ball tournament. So I want to give a thank you to all the people that helped organize that, and another thank you to the UND Athletics. They had a bunch of their teams out there, including the UND hockey team, which led the procession for opening ceremonies. So that was pretty cool. The Air Force Bowl was on the 16th, which was another great event, and probably the coolest and the neatest event. I know some of the people in here were there as well, but on September 13th, the Honor Flight came back. It was a trip that veterans were able to take as part of an Honor Flight to go to DC and be honored. If anybody that was at the airport, it was just a phenomenon. There was hundreds of people that showed up, American flags everywhere. It was really great. I want to thank Don Roberts and all the organizers that put that together. There was tears in their eyes, some of the Vietnam vets that were coming back. It really felt like they got the reception that they deserved 50 years ago but didn't get. So it was just a phenomenal, touching night. I think anybody that was there definitely felt filled up, and it was great to see those guys come back and to feel that love too. So, really phenomenal. So with that, we're going to move on to two citizen comments. We've got, we're going to have it the same way as last time. Sherri's got it, so please.
Dennis Catlett.
Mr. Catlett, please.
Thank you. You know, once again, it amazes me, you pledge allegiance to the flag, but, you know, you have to have some respect for it. You'd have to have some respect for this country, for this city, for this town you're talking about, these veterans. These veterans have given their lives for hundreds of years to protect our freedom, which communism does not have, which you guys are openly welcome with open arms in here. And you just don't get it, but you have to have a mind and a heart in order to get it. And you people, the way you're embracing this is beyond measure. You know, there was going to be a stop put to it, but you've got more construction going on out there now than you did before, and it just don't stop, you know? And the other things that go on, you guys don't want to talk about neither, like with our power outages, you know? It's like I said at the last meeting, and I've talked to many more people that have come up to me and spoke to me about it. You know, we've had more power outages in the last four months than we had in the last 30 years, and you know, that's pretty bad, thinking all the weather we've had and other problems we've had in this community. But you talk about an Honor Flight? You know, those men, some of them are crippled from protecting the freedom of this country. Others aren't here anymore because they protected the freedom of this country. And you people are bringing the communists in on a red carpet. You're actually paying for them to come in, and you people don't have a clue about what communism is evidently. Tom, from the county commissioner, spoke up the other night, and he says, oh, there's businesses from America and China. Sure there is, but they're owned by the Chinese. Nobody owns land in China except the Chinese government, the communist Chinese government. Nobody else can own land in China. That's a fact. Look it up. Another fact is China controls all their entities that are in other nations. One of the laws is if a company in Africa that is owned by the Chinese, they want them to do a little snooping espionage, and they tell the people of that company to do it, since it's a Chinese government-owned facility, by law, they have to comply with the request. Why aren't you people up on this? You seem to be up on everything else. You're good at getting bids out and getting work done that really shouldn't be done, because when it has to be undone, who's going to pay for it? You're so free with the taxpayers' money. And you know, I'd love to see our RBE start up again. And I notice how you guys shorten that up, but you know, how long have they been down now? You know, that was one of your beautiful shining stars when that come about. Where is it now? And you know, that thing is nothing compared to what you're trying to bring in now, and when this one crashes, of course, none of you guys are going to be here. And Mr. Bochinski, you made that very plain months ago, that in two years, you're not going to be around here. Well, that's great. We will, and we're going to have to live in the fallout if this thing would happen. And I don't understand why none of you give a second thought to it. You know, there's got to be something, somewhere in you that has some life left to it, you know? You've got no wisdom, I can plainly see that, and I ping your say that you know nothing, but oh yes, you know something. You know that you know nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catlett.
Craig Spicer.
Mr. Spicer, please.
How you doing? Well, I wasn't even headed for the meeting tonight. I was going to let you guys off the hook, but earlier I talked to Todd. Something came up that I think everybody on the council and everybody in Grand Forks should be aware of, and that is the fact that we are, the city is marching on with some of these infrastructure things. Earlier last week, we have some footage of some infrastructure work being done on the Fu Fang project in their property. That was being done by Dan's Excavating, and from what we've gathered, that was being paid for by the city, which I'm a little unaware of how you can do that. That's the first thing. And then this afternoon, later in the afternoon, it was brought to our attention that there was a construction company on the Fu Fang site that was commissioned by CPS Engineering through bids, and they got the low bid to start grabbing out the old Tom Walsh Farm site, which has been there for as far back as I can remember as a kid. It's, there's no one there now, but it's on the Fu Fang property. And through the process that I brought up here, oh, it's probably several months ago now, we determined that there's eagles nest on that property. Okay? There's eagles nest there. They're supposed to be protected by the Golden Eagle and the Bald Eagle Protection Act. We've been talking to the game and fish, and they say there's nothing they can do until some action has been taken. Well, we're trying to stop that action before it happens, and we think that we would like to make a request, which I did several months ago but never got handled by anybody, for an environmental impact study before they start grabbing those trees out and endangering the bald eagle and the golden eagle and whatever else is on that property. So I would think that through all of this going ahead and doing what the city council feels is necessary, whether we're on one side of this issue or not, I would think that you would stand up as council member for the city of Grand Forks and try to protect the most valuable bird that's in our country. Now, I would also like to know, there was Terracan was out there, Terracan was soil testing. I don't know who paid for that, but if the city's paying for it, doesn't that go against the transactions that are supposed to be happening here, that they can't be paying for any of these projects? And if so, I'd like to know if there's a malts behind it already and who's paying for it for sure. So I don't understand with the actions that our senators and our congressmen took, that they're telling us not to go ahead with this and we keep proceeding. Can you just give me a little summary, Brandon, of what you think about that?
We're waiting for the CFISS report when that comes back. All Fu Fang-related infrastructure has been on a halt. They have a private land that they're allowed to do things on. They have not requested permits or anything, just as you're a private landlord and you can do things on your own land? As can they.
Okay. So we're waiting for CFISS before the city continues with anything else?
Anything that's related specifically to Fu Fang. There's other pieces as part of that annexation that need to be done. We've got to serve that area. It's a piece of the city now. It has to be served.
Okay. Well, now that I'm here and I've given you this information about the eagles, where do you stand on that? I'll give you a minute to think about it, but...
Where do I stand on the eagles? I'm not aware of there being eagles out there or any of the laws or regulations as part of that, so something that'll have to be looked into. Thank you. Mr. Leake, please.
Well, I'm Todd Leake. I live at 2371 10th Avenue Northeast, Emorydo. I live in Farm and Fairfield Township. And in addition to other unresolved issues that I brought before this council, I'm here today to talk about the waste biosolids coming out of the rear end of the wastewater process at the Fu Fang, proposed Fu Fang wet corn milling facility. At the July 25th meeting of the whole, a presentation was given by Mr. Gotti, part of which outlined the wastewater pretreatment plan system. A wastewater pretreatment process flow diagram was included that showed that biosolids produced at the end of the system were to truck out with an arrow pointing out of the system. To where would be the obvious next question? The answer was also provided as stated either land application or landfill. The facility is stated to use 25 million bushels of corn annually. Corn weighs 56 pounds per bushel, and four pounds of amino acid-based product will be removed from that 56 pounds, leaving 52 pounds of biosolids. Allowing for a couple of pounds of biosolids that reach the Grand Forks wastewater treatment facility and some that may gas off in processing, that leaves approximately 1.25 billion pounds of biosolid sludge cake, as it was described in the diagram. Unlike an ethanol plant that at the end, that at the end, the product is distillers' grain feed, the acids used to separate the proteins from the rest of the process stream in this wet corn milling facility proposal produce an industrial waste product unusable as animal feed. It is not feasible under 40 CFR 28, 258.21 to use even a small portion of that sludge cake material as an alternative daily cover for the landfill, Grand Forks landfill. In lieu of a soil daily cover, if used, it may be unusable for that purpose due to the federal criteria and issues of operating the landfill equipment in that material on a daily basis. In other words, just the consistency of the sludge cake may not be conducive to running machinery in it. That leaves land application regulated under 40 CFR Part 503, which is general requirements for land application of sewage sludge, which is aka biosolids, which sludge cake falls under the definitions of Part 503. In other words, this is, the sludge cake is considered the same as sewage sludge. Mr. Gotti indicated that land application would be the likely disposable option. If the 503 requirements are met, will this sludge, where will this sludge cake be applied? Assuming that this sludge cake is an acceptable soil amendment, and there's no guarantee that it is, and it may be even detrimental to crop production, under Part 503, it must meet the cumulative pollutant loading rate requirements of Part 503.13. This will require extensive contracting with landowners to apply this 1.5 billion pounds of sludge. These solids cannot be applied on frozen ground or on growing crops or grasslands, and therefore, the window of application is early fall and early spring. Where will this sludge cake be stored in winter and summer? As a Fu Fang plant is being cited in Grand Forks, is, as a Fu Fang plant being cited in Grand Forks is an initiative of the city, will this sludge cake biosolids material be spread on cropland solely within the two-mile extraterritorial zoning authority area of Grand Forks? Perhaps on cropland in the south end? On the north end? Will it stink? Will people complain? Will it become a legal nuisance? What will be the solution? I think that the most likely scenario is that the city will pressure the county commission to insist that this sludge cake be disposed in rural Grand Forks County, just to get up the rural areas, far from the city. After all, those rural folks deal with the smell of odor issues as they have done with Simplot and crystal sugar tailings. They're used to those smells, right? After all, those people don't vote for Grand Forks city officials. In any scenario, this biosolid disposal issue must be dealt with in more detail, and I am not aware of any work or addressing this major issue of the Fu Fang project. I think us rural folk would like to know where this stuff is headed.
Thank you, Mr. Leake.
Thank you.
Mr. Leake, please.
Lonnie Leake from Emorydo. So I noticed that the city of Duluth is helping subsidize Sirius Aircraft Company, just like Grand Forks City did in the past. So it turns out that the Aviation Industry Corporation of China, which is a state-owned enterprise directly working with People's Liberation Army Air Force, they build jet fighters for the Chinese military. Sirius is a direct subsidiary of AVIC. Therefore, Duluth, Grand Forks, it makes one wonder why we would be subsidizing an outfit that makes jet fighters and other aviation entities for the People's Liberation Army Air Force. Just, was it yesterday, Biden, President Biden said that we would protect Taiwan directly with our own troops? Anyhow, it goes without saying. So I have a second part of my time, and that's, I see you haven't endeavored to put up the flag of the Red Lake Nation, Chippewa Nation. Maybe they wouldn't give you a flag, I don't know. But in light of what's happened at UND last couple of weeks about the bones and artifacts not being properly cataloged, and UND broke the law passed back in 1990 about reparation of human remains, it makes a person think that there's also all sorts of unintended consequences that are kept track of. I would say that this Fu Fang project is going to be a quagmire of unintended consequences. In my opinion, you're wasting your time and resources trying to bring in a state-owned enterprise in China that is 30% owned of Haftco Company, which is a state-owned enterprise, who has a plant in Xinjiang, China, where the United Nations Human Rights Commission came out last week and said that China and their companies and entities are in violation of human rights. Therefore, I respectfully ask that this council reconsider its position and end this fiasco. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leake.
I have no other comments.
Thank you. Moving on to item three, awards presentation, appointments and proclamations. There are none for this evening, so move on to four, public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
4.1 is the public hearing and second reading of ordinance setting the 2023 budget to approve the attached salary plan and adopt the resolution establishing the 2023 fees.
Thank you. I know you've got some comments on this, Marine, but I'm going to open the public hearing for item 4.1 first. So is there anybody here to speak on item 4.1? Public hearing, the floor is yours. Anybody here to speak on item 4.1?
What is the 4.2 again, Brandon?
Yeah, one second. She can read it out for you again.
4.1, the public, it's the budget. 2023 budget.
You're good.
I'm here on the tax item.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, we'll close the public hearing.
All right, Mayor Bochinski, members of the city council, it's been a while since we've spoken about the 2023 budget, so I'll just go through the highlights and then ask you what we're looking at for approval tonight. We did present the salary plan and gave a preview back on June 20th, and then the budget, the mayor's budget was presented on July 18th. It gained preliminary approval on August 1st with the addition per council action to also include a 1% additional monies for the PFP, which came from the Loan and Stabilization Fund, or if there ends up being savings in any health insurance change. In total, the budget holds Mills level from previous budget year. We did keep state aid sales tax budgeted revenue equivalent with 2021 actual and kept the same sales tax allocation for the general sales tax. Your general fund is roughly 46.1 million. That is revised for the additional PFP dollars. The general fund makes up about 20% of your total budget. 76% of that comes from public safety, health, street and engineering. 53% is due to public safety alone. The salary plan is funded with that additional 1%. It brings it to 5.13% for market and PFP. And we did include contingent on approval of grant six police officers, and then also includes two additional dispatcher trainees. In total, the budget is roughly $227 million. When you net this of any internal transfers, that comes to 197.9 million or up 2.47% overall. I think that covers most of it. The overall residential utility bill for the average family of four would look to an increase of $2.67 or 2.74%. That's on a monthly basis, based on 6,000 gallon user. With that, we did include one change on the fee since you saw it last, and just to include the fee for the electric scooter to match the same as what we do for bike shares. So that is included as well. With that, what we look for tonight then is, if there are no changes, and we will make changes as appropriate, but what we look for tonight is the second reading of the ordinance for final approval and adoption of the 2023 budget. With that also includes adoption of the salary plan and the 2023 establishment of fees.
Thank you, Marine. And then I know we still got some discussion on the health insurance, so we would look, you'll see later in action items for a chance to vote on that. We'd just be looking for a budget amendment later if we do need to make any changes on that, just so everybody's aware, and we'd be looking at making that decision next week, which you'll see in the action items. So with that, does, I guess it opened up to any council comments before voting on item 4.1? Mr. Weber.
I'll move approval of the, and adoption of the 2023 budget and salary plan, including the resolution for the 2023 established fees.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Got a second from council member Cavami. Further discussion? President Sandy, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's no secret that I'm not a big fan of the additional 1% for the pay-for-performance. I think it was arbitrary, capricious, and it goes against the salary plan that we've been religiously following for years and years and years. And in my opinion, if we want to make changes to the actual salary plan process, we should do that. We should have that discussion at the next committee of the whole and then agree to it at the next council meeting and send it to committee for discussion and review, perhaps comparing to other cities and whatnot and so forth. However, that committee believes it should be done. I don't believe that we should just arbitrarily add a 1% this year, because who knows who will be here in a couple of years, and those people might not like paying our employees, and they might arbitrarily say, hey, I want to reduce pay for performance completely, or I want to buy back the money that went into pay for performance this year in the next budget. I, I just personally don't think it's a good precedent to set this. So I would make the motion to remove the additional 1% for pay for performance. And if people don't go along with me, that's okay. We'll, we'll still be friends.
All right, so we currently have a motion on the floor. I guess if, if...
I would make the friendly amendment to remove the additional 1% for pay for performance.
Why don't we do this? If you're okay with it, Mr. Weber, you've made the motion, and Mr. Cavami, you'd have to agree. Would you be willing to make a vote first on that amendment to make that decision before voting on the final? Are you content with your motion at this time?
So there isn't a need for a second. There's just a need for us to accept a friendly amendment and then to have a vote on that separate. Is that right, Mr.?
Well, right now, we just, we just have a motion, but he can't, he can't motion, I don't believe he can motion with, or to be in a motion on the floor. So we would, first, we'd need to know if you're, his motion would be out of order at this point, so if you want to, if you were willing to hold off and wait and remove your motion from the floor, and we can vote on that item specifically, since yours is all-encompassing, I guess is the question. Do you understand that?
So again, if we were, if Council Rep Cavami and myself were willing to accept that amendment, we would vote on that separately first?
We could vote on that separately, just as, just the 1%, if you want that to stay in the budget. We could vote on that just as an amendment to the budget, because it would be a taking away, which is acceptable.
Right.
And then vote on the entire budget as a whole, with that either included or not included based on the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that your budget did allow for an increase in salary for city employees, especially in the face of this year's, you know, kind of historic, high rates of inflation. But the reality is that the raise that is included in the budget doesn't even match current rates of inflation. But I appreciate that you found a way to keep Mills level, the Mill Levy level, and provide some degree of raise. However, I was concerned that the proposed raise did not give enough for pay for performance. So it's one thing to give everyone a raise because they've been here long enough or other market studies, but I think one of the most important things in employee compensation is to consider their performance and to make sure that good performance is being rewarded. This is kind of the hallmark of good business practice, and often we're asked to run government more like a business. We can't. We're in a different process than a for-profit business, but nonetheless, these types of HR practices do make sense. It makes sense to reward for performance. So with that stated, I'm willing to accept the friendly amendment and to have that go forward for a vote if Council Rep Cavami is also willing.
So to confirm, we'd still have another vote to discuss the 1%.
So currently, right now, he was taking the motion off the floor, and then we would, President Sandier would have the opportunity to make a motion at that point.
Yeah, that's fair. I'd agree.
Is that, does that work for you, Mr. Gosstead, Ms. Thorsted?
It works fine. I understand we just have a motion at this point. I don't know if we have a second yet or not.
Well, we currently have just, yeah, we didn't have, his, we had an original motion from Mr. Weber, which has been pulled back, so there's nothing on the floor. That's correct.
Except there's a motion that's waiting for a second.
Yeah, why don't we restate that? Now it's in order, please.
I would move to amend the budget to reduce or eliminate the additional 1% pay for performance, because although I agree with Mr. Weber, we should be rewarding people for their performance. The funds from our salary plan ebb and flow. Often, you'll end up with lots... Often, you'll end up with lots of money in pay for performance and little bit for market increases because the market doesn't increase. On years like this, the market increased a lot, and we had all the money in our salary plan to cover the market increases, which is what the plan is supposed to do. So I, I believe the plan is working exactly the way it was intended.
Okay, could you restate your motion then?
I, I move to amend the budget to eliminate the additional 1% for pay for performance raises.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second? A second for Ms. Osowski now. Any further comment on that?
Yes, if I may.
Please, Mr. Weber.
In addition to this discussion of proper HR process, we need to recognize the fact that we are competing with other cities around the region for hiring processes and retention. And it's, pay for performance is an essential aspect of that. And so with that, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
All right, why don't we, I'm going to, we have any further comment? Please, Mr. Mr. Cavani.
So to be clear, we don't have time, based on budget requirements and the calendar that we're, the month that we're in, to go through the process and figure out where we're broken or not broken, or what's working or not. And I think that's why I, I agreed to the 1% personally. I don't think it's the right solution. I don't think it's long-term viable. Yes, we have the cash now, so we can do it. I feel like we, you know, we don't have a better option. So we're in a, kind of in a, in a corner where we need to support our employees, but at the same point, we need to set example that I would vote no on this next year. You know, 100% doesn't matter how much money we have, because my expectation would be that we're going to work together and figure out how to make this better and have a plan for it. So I would, I will vote to support the 1%, but this year only.
Okay. And I think just so everybody's aware, we've had some conversations with Ms. Bavette, and she's getting some early numbers on what it's going to cost to get a new salary plan. I think there's been a lot of push, and a lot of RCs have had success with more of a step plan, that you know exactly where you're going to be, and I think that makes a lot of sense. There's going to be some cost to doing that, but I think that is certainly something we should work through this next year. The salary plan's currently pretty aged, so something we can work through before the next budget, certainly. Any further comments? Mr. Weigle.
Just, I'm having some technology issues here, so bear with me. How many city employees do we currently have?
I think we got, Ms. Bavette, if you want to answer that, please. Like, it's around 600 with part-time, but you probably, tighten that up a little bit.
Correct. Thanks for the question, Councilmember Weigle. We have about 525 full-time benefited employees, about 600 if you include part-time and seasonal.
And how much was that 1%? Was that 229,000?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes, the 1% for the general fund portion that we were using loan and stabilization cash is 229,407.
What was that across all funds?
Across all funds is 334,056.
Mr. Weigle, anything further?
No, no, thank you.
All right, any further comment?
Mayor? Yeah, I would.
President Sandy, please.
I, I'm all for putting together a, studying our salary plan. I don't think anybody doesn't want to take care of our employees. They're obviously our, our most important asset, and we need to make sure to take care of them, which I believe we are, because although Mr. Weber and I agree with him, we are competing with other cities. That's why we survey the other cities that we're competing against and make sure that we give raises that meet the average, average raises across those cities. However, we, we did hear that some of the, our peer cities aren't paying, aren't necessarily paying the midpoint when they're bringing in new employees. We absolutely need to look at that. So I'm, I'm 100% will encourage us to do that, and we'll get behind it whatever we come up with for next year. Thank you.
Well, thank you, President Sandy. Any further comment? All right, seeing none. Can you read back the, the motion? I think it's just to amend the budget to.
Yes. What I have is that President Sandy moved, Osowski seconded to amend the budget to remove the 1% portion for PFP.
All right, thank you. We'll call for a roll call vote here. If you want to go down the line, please.
Sure. Weigle?
No.
Osowski?
Your, your, yeah, your vote would be to remove it, so a yes vote would be to remove the 1%.
So yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Weber?
Against, no.
Lunskey? Cavani?
No.
And Sandy?
Yes.
We have a tie.
Geez, we have a tie.
I think Councilmember Veen is on.
Is Veen on? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Veen, we're going to need you on this, otherwise I get to decide.
Mr. Veen, did you hear what the vote is for?
Well, Mr. Gostad, if we can't get him through, how long do we need to wait? There he goes, Mr. Veen.
Okay. I think I'm on mute. The answer, my vote was no.
Your vote is no, so that is defeated by a 4 to 3 vote. All right, any further comments or, or motions on the budget?
I'll move approval on the budget.
Got a motion to approve the budget? Do we have a second?
Mr. Cavani seconded, sorry.
Mr. Cavani seconded. So we got a motion to approve the budget as is. Any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for the good discussion. Move on to item 4.2, Maureen.
4.2 is the public hearing and second reading of ordinance establishing the tech accelerator board.
Thank you. Same procedure. I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anyone has any comments related to item 4.2, the floor is yours. Please step up. Seeing none, public hearing period is closed. So we'd be looking for a motion or any comments from council on item 4.2. Move approval? Got a motion to approve from Mr. Cavani. Do we have a second? Second from Mr., I'm sorry, I should be saying Vice President, whoever. Second from Vice President, whoever. Any further comment on item 4.2? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I believe he was voting in the affirmative. All right, moving on to action items. I know we've got some people that have been waiting patiently for these. Administration is going to poll items 5.1 and 5.2. Any other items this evening that council would like to have polled? We're going to get out of here in record time. All right, so we'd be looking for, on the consent agenda for items 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, 5.9, 5.10, 5.11, 5.12, 5.13, 5.14, 5.15, 5.16, and 5.17. Can I get a motion to approve those items? Motion from President Sandy, second from Vice President Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries unanimously. On to 5.1 and 5.2.
5.1, employee insurance benefits, RFP results, and set special city council meeting for next Monday, September 26, and attached is the presentation.
Thank you. And just before we start, so everyone's aware, there is going to be an employee rep meeting, and there will be another meeting with the pension insurance committee coming up on Thursday. So there's a little bit more work to be done. That's why we're going to, you know, wait so everyone gets the, you know, enough time to, to, to look at this and give their input, and we'd be essentially tonight just setting a special city council meeting, but I think it's good to have this information out. Hopefully, this wasn't beginning of your presentation, but.
By all means.
Ms. Bavette, please, take it away.
Thank you. With all that being said, I'll introduce Katie Videl with Brown and Brown Consulting Group, and she'll go over our proposals for health, or for insurances for employees. All right, Mayor Bochinski and councilmembers, thank you for your time today. I appreciate it. As Tanji said, my name is Katie Videl. I'm with Brown and Brown, who is the benefits consultant for the city of Grand Forks. And today, we've been working heavily over the last several weeks to prepare this presentation for you tonight. We've been meeting. We released a public bid notice on August 17. Proposals are due back on the 31st. Since then, our team has been reviewing those proposals and going back to the various carriers with different questions, both from our team as well as your team and employees. We've presented very detailed information to the HR team, the finance team, as well as several employee representatives, and we've also presented some detailed information to the pension and insurance committee. As Mayor Bochinski mentioned, we will continue with a couple additional meetings here yet this week and next prior to any decisions being made. What we wanted to do today, we want to respect your time, so we're going to give you a high level summary of, of those results, so that you guys can have some time to digest, and any follow-up information you can feel free to ask us for. I also just want to mention, I do have a few teammates on the line as well. I have Kelly Gates, Randy Johnson, and John Heath all on the line in, in the event we have some questions. So without further ado, we'll go right into the medical renewal and market check. So in summary, we received three fully insured proposals. So we received your Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal, as well as the Health Partners proposal, which is a company out of Minnesota, as well as Medica and, excuse me, United Healthcare. So we did receive four proposals here. These are all being illustrated as the best and final, so ultimately where the proposals are at as of today. So Blue Cross Blue Shield is coming in at an eight, a 0.8% below current, so an immediate savings right there with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Health Partners did come in very aggressive at a 7.8% decrease from your current rates. Health Partners is also offering an implementation credit, as they realize with change comes a lot of administrative work and cost as well, so they want to make sure they're recognizing that and offering that to help cover those expenses. Medica provided a proposal that came in 4.3% above current. This is a, a little bit unique product. It's called an ACO product. To keep that simply, your members would have the choice between two health plans, which each have their own network. So one would be called the All True and You product. The other would be called the Passport product. The All True and You, members would have to stay within that All True and You network, but in return, they would see a lower premium. If they moved over to the Passport product, they'd pay a higher premium, but they would have a broader network. So I just want to mention that as we're going through that. It's a little slight difference there in the, the plan designs. And then United Healthcare did offer a proposal, but unfortunately, it wasn't super competitive at 18% above current. Are there any initial questions on this piece? As I know, this is, is probably what you've been excited to hear.
One, one question first, Mr. Weber. Just on that 124,000 implementation credit, what exactly that go for? Some of the administrative costs? How about people that on the planet have some expenses with shifting? Is there, just give us an insight on that.
Yeah, so this is more intended for the costs that the city would incur making a health plan change, so things like your employees' time for educational sessions, your HR and finance professionals' additional time that they would invest in a change like this, whether it's hosting those employee meetings, producing additional materials for them to help understand that change, maybe any printing needs you might need, different things that come along with a carrier change, and more of which we'll talk about in just a moment.
Should we just build an expense, and then we'd get reimbursed for that?
They would, my understanding is they would offer you basically a check to see, to use how you see fit towards those administrative expenses.
Okay. Vice President Weber.
Yeah, you're right. This is kind of the, the most important point of the presentation, and, and I'm not understanding it. Is it based on the current slide?
It is, yes.
Walk me through this slide. Where do I understand Blue Cross Blue Shield? They're the, the second, the second major column there?
Yes, so if you go from the furthest left, the darkest blue is going to be your current rates today. So that's your current total expected cost, based on your current enrollment.
Right.
If we, and this is total cost, so yours and the employees combined. Moving to the next column over, the 2023 fully insured renewal, that would be is if no changes are made, you renewed with Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's what your budget would be, again, in total. The third column or the middle column is the Health Partners proposal. The fourth column is the Medica, and then the fifth is the United Healthcare.
And you mentioned that Blue Cross Blue Shield as, as a savings.
Correct.
And where do I find that on here? Because I'm, I'm seeing a 5.2% increase at the bottom. I'm, I'm just.
Oh, you've got, I think you've got the, you've got the old one that's been updated. So if you look at the screens, you're going to see it at the bottom.
I'm looking at the presentation that was posted earlier. Okay, very good. Thanks.
Yes, Councilmember Weber, that is a great question. We did ask the carriers to provide their best and final presentations, and so we did receive a more aggressive proposal from Blue Cross Blue Shield from that previous, previous presentation.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
All right, please, any other questions on this slide? Please continue.
So I just want to make sure we're keeping in mind that with a carrier change does come some non-financial considerations that I want you to keep in the back of your mind. Mostly are going to be member disruption related. So the first being pharmacy. The first felt change when moving carriers is going to be felt in the pharmacy space, because pharmacy claims are processed right when you're filling your drug for the first time. So some of those differences are going to include things like a formulary list change. And, and the easiest way I've found to explain this is think of formulary list as the preferred drug list. So Blue Cross has a preferred drug list, Health Partners has a preferred drug list, Medica has a preferred, preferred drug list, and although there might be overlap, there is also going to be differences for different reasons. And so a member might fill a drug on Blue Cross Blue Shield today, that's considered formulary. On Health Partners, it may be considered non-formulary. And, and put simply, what that would mean for your members is they would pay more out of their pocket for those drugs. However, the reverse can be true as well. You could have a member who's on a non-formulary drug today with Blue Cross that may move over to a non, or a formulary drug if, if so you made a change to another carrier. But that is a disruption we see, and probably the biggest one we do see when individuals make a carrier change. A couple other in the pharmacy space are going to be contracted pricing. So just like medical carriers, the insurance carriers and PBMs go to the different pharmacies in the area, and they negotiate different pricing. So something that might cost, say, $100 on your plan today through a certain pharmacy could cost 120, or it could cost $90 with a different carrier, just because they have different negotiated prices. So again, that could mean your members could see a higher cost or a lower cost, depending on that negotiated pricing. In addition is the drug tiering. So there's different drug tiers, and different carriers classify drugs in different ways. So what might be considered a tier one drug, which is typically the lowest cost to your members, with one carrier might be considered a tier three drug with another carrier. So there again, members might see either a higher or lower cost at the pharmacy, depending on those different classifications. A couple other things to keep in mind are network access disruption. So there, with a carrier change, again, they have different contracted providers. So Blue Cross Blue Shield definitely has a strong network in, in both the state of North Dakota and nationally and globally. Health Partners, for example, also has a fairly strong network as well in North Dakota. They are still growing that network. When you're talking major medical clinics, they typically have all of those carriers. Where you're going to see more disruption are in the areas of typically chiropractic care, therapy, and mental health providers. But to their credit, I am seeing them build that network more and more every day. Just over the last couple of months, they've even contracted with some new providers in those spaces. Medical policy differences. This one isn't as big of a disruption factor, but each carrier determines their own medical policy. So that tells the claims processing team what is a covered service and what is not a covered service, and if there's any certain circumstances that have to be met in order for it to be a covered service. So each carrier has different medical policy, although they're all pretty similar. There could be something that maybe, for example, might require prior approval with one carrier that doesn't with another. Or it might be covered for certain conditions with one carrier, but not for certain conditions with another. Case management and care management. So members with typically some chronic conditions, or their family members might have a chronic condition, could be assigned a case manager, a case manager, or enrolled in a care management program. With a carrier change, typically that means they're assigned a nurse or medical professional that helps review their case and continue providing them support through that journey to better health. And so typically, if there is a carrier change, we would certainly help with that transition over to a new care management or case management program. However, that member would be changing from their current case management program over to a new program. There's also other carrier programs, things like the wellness benefits. They might be slightly different, although both, all the carriers offer wellness programs. There would be some differences on things like that. As I mentioned on Medica, they do have that ACO model. So that would be a little bit of a difference from your plan, your single plan and your single network today to two plans with two different networks. And then, as I mentioned, there would come along a lot of administrative things, things like employee education sessions, making sure they're aware of all these potential changes and well-educated and prepared going into that effective date. And as well as administrative things like getting to know the different reporting, the billing systems, those type of things. So we would just ask that you consider these things as well as it's not purely a financial decision. There would be potential member disruption with a carrier change as well. But again, I'd like to open it up to any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Mayor Bocinski, I've got a question.
Mr. Weigl, please.
Maybe it's for Katie, maybe it's for Tangi, but we switched, I believe, two years ago. Can somebody maybe talk about any of the disruptions we experienced then? Or maybe we didn't experience any and the process went super smooth?
Thank you, Councilmember Weigl. To answer your question, when we were under the health insurance through ND Perz, we did have a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan that switched into a Sanford-based plan. And with that carrier switch, there was, I would say, about a year or better of growing pain to transition into that plan. We had that plan for two to three years and then transitioned back into the Blue Cross plan. Transitioning to the Blue Cross plan had no hiccups. So it depends on the carrier. Some of the challenges we had moving to the Sanford plan in the past were they didn't have a wellness platform that was as built out as Blue Cross Blue Shield did, as well as the prescription drug carrier change was probably the most impactful to all the employees.
All right, thank you. Mr. Weber, do you have another comment? All right, please continue.
All right, so that's in summary of the medical plan. I think regardless, the city is going to see a win on the medical plan this year. Moving into some of those other ancillary benefits, equally as important. We'll keep this part simple as well. Dental and vision. So dental, we did go to several carriers to obtain the proposals. We would say that at this time, MetLife is looking the strongest in that area. They're coming out at a 15% decrease from your current rates. They're offering a two-year rate guarantee, so rates are guaranteed through 12/31 of '24. The annual maximum is increased in the benefits. So today, members have $1,500 to spend in their dental benefits. That would increase to $1,750. There's richer out-of-network benefits. So what this means is if a member sees an out-of-network provider, which we are seeing more and more dental and vision providers being out-of-network, is MetLife pays at what they call the 90th percentile of usual and customary reimbursement. So in other words, I'm going to try to keep this simple, is they pay at, they look at your geographic area and their reimbursement to out-of-network providers is what nine out of 10 doctors, is greater than or equal to what nine out of 10 doctors in your area would charge. So put simply, the very rich out-of-network benefits, members would unlikely have, in many situations, high charges applied to their out-of-pocket expenses. In addition, MetLife is providing technology credits. And what that is for is it would go towards a benefit enrollment system. So it'd be a platform where your members can go and enroll in their benefits and your HR team would have a easier mechanism to manage those benefits. And so MetLife is offering to pay part of the premium collected to go towards a benefit system for your administration. Going into the vision, we have two strong contenders here. We have your current carrier at a no increase to your current rates and a four-year rate guarantee. And they did offer to enhance your current benefits. So again, a great change there. MetLife is also offering a no rate change, a four-year rate guarantee through 2026. They are offering pretty rich out-of-network benefits, which I do believe Avisis came back with some pretty strong matching benefits there. And then again, those technology credits for the benefit enrollment platform.
Is there some synergies in having dental and vision under the same carrier provider?
Thank you for your question, Mayor Bocinski. I would say yes. Certainly, it provides some administrative ease. It's one billing, it's one carrier contact, those type of things. So it does provide some efficiencies there. Also, the technology credits are applied as a percentage of premium. So if you get just the percentage of the dental premium, it is less than the percentage of dental and vision. But certainly, I would say it's not off the table that you can separate them. That's certainly still an option.
All right, continue.
Any other questions? All right, life and disability, this will go quick. So all good news here on the life and disability front. We're proposing no carrier changes on this front. Minnesota Life Insurance Company came in at an 8.3% decrease from current. Voluntary life insurance, they are holding the rates. Those are those rates that employees pay for their additional coverage, but they are increasing some of those benefits. So today, members have a guarantee issue of up to $400,000. That would increase to $750,000. And spouses have a maximum of $100,000 today, and that would increase to $250,000. Long-term disability is through Madison National, and they're offering a decrease of 11.9%. So again, all wins here across the board for the city. But any questions on the life and disability benefits?
Oh, continue.
Okay. All right, we are still in the process of reviewing some of these other benefits, but the flexible spending account is another one we're looking at today. That's administered through WEX. We are also looking at a couple other carriers, including Health Equity and PNA Group. So we did have a meeting with one of them this afternoon. We're trying to get a presentation from the other ones so that we can continue to share additional details with that pension and insurance committee. So a little bit more to come on that part. But a quick update here is that all of the carriers, WEX is offering a four-year rate guarantee, but they are coming in the most expensive. Health Equity and PNA Group are both offering a savings on the table as well as those five-year and three-year rate guarantees. So again, I think no matter what, we'll probably see a savings to the city in this front. If not, we'll see the rates being held. We are also taking a look at potentially hiring a COBRA administrator. So that would take some of the work off of your HR team's plate by hiring a individual or a company to administer your COBRA benefits for you. There's a lot of legal requirements that go behind that, a lot of little steps you have to make sure you're following. So what we see is a lot of employers in the market do take a look at hiring a COBRA administrator. And the reason I have it on the same side is this is a lot of these same carriers offer COBRA administration as well. So sometimes bundling them can offer a little bit of a savings as well. We're still reviewing if we want to go that route this year, but that is something we do have proposals for. Any questions on either of those benefits? All right, I believe this is my last one. But the last one we're looking at is your employee assistance program. We, today, you guys have your services through Magellan. We just want to make sure you're getting the best value for your dollar on these benefits. So we are looking at other carriers here as well, not to say that we're going to change. We did get proposals from Impavia, ENA Next Gen, and Cure Link. All of them are offering more sessions than you get today, and a lot of them do offer some enhanced benefits as well. So we'll continue to review these benefits, but we are considering making, if we do make a change in this space, doing it outside of open enrollment just because there's so many other potential changes that we're looking at. So not wanting to throw too much at everybody at once. But any questions on this? All right. So next steps, this is just a summary of the decisions we'll ultimately need. And my understanding is that's what we will be looking for at next week's special meeting. So first would be the medical. Do we want to renew with Blue Cross or do we want to take a look at maybe a change to another carrier? Same with dental, renewing with the standard, which is a rate hold, or changing carriers to MetLife or potentially another carrier, offering a savings. Vision, renewing with Avisis or taking a look at another carrier such as MetLife. And then flexible spending as well. So my understanding is we do have a pension and insurance committee meeting this week Thursday to, again, to review not only the information that's been shared from carriers as questions have come back to us, but also getting employee feedback into consideration, reviewing the references and the reference checks that we have done as well, and then seeking a final recommendation to bring to you guys as the committee, which is scheduled for next Monday, the 26th. But that concludes my presentation. Any final questions for me?
Mayor Bocinski, I read another question.
Yep, please, Mr. Weigl.
So obviously, I believe, if I'm wrong in stating this, let me know, but our plan right now is 75% employer paid, or 25% employee paid. So with one of the companies that was seven and a half percent under, obviously, the city's saving seven and a half percent. But can you talk about what the employees save as well? That might be Katie or Tangi, I'm not quite sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Weigl. I can put together that information for you and send out to the city council what that would look like on a monthly or annual basis. I believe the numbers I looked at this morning with the 7.8 was like $15 a month for the single and 25 for family per month would be the savings. So less than that for the 1%. All right, let me, I'll just, I'll just say that I will crunch those numbers for you and send out that information for you to review so you can see what actual impact that looks like with the premiums.
Perfect. No, I think that's important because we talk about, you know, what the city saves, which is fantastic, but I think the other great thing too is that our employees save. And so when we discuss the 1% pay for performance, we also need to realize too that there's opportunities with the new medical plan, medical insurance plan, that they're also going to see a raise in their paycheck by saving money on what they're paying for their medical insurance as well.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
First of all, Mr. Weigl, a great question and comments, thanks. So we would get that for the one company, but you'll get it for Blue Cross, for all of them. Great, thanks, with the updated figures. And the updated figures, when would we have that presentation available to us online?
You talking about the one that you're just, that you're seeing now?
It has been sent to Sherry, and so once she gets a chance to update the agenda.
Probably by tomorrow or something.
Yeah, it'll, it'll replace the one updated one.
Sure, all right, thanks. Thanks again for asking that question, Danny.
So, sounds good. What we're looking for then tonight is to set a special city council meeting so we can take final action a week from today, so on the 26th. So can we get a motion, if you're willing? Got a motion, President Sandy, second from Ms. Osowski. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.2 Northern Valley Law Enforcement Memorial update and funding request.
Well, we made you wait there, Sheriff Commissioner Ross, but this is real positive. Looks like it's getting, getting close to getting this thing funded and getting her done, so.
Yep, it is.
Todd, you gonna start with this one?
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask, Commissioner, can I call you Commissioner Ross? Why don't you start? We thought Commissioner Ross may be back, depending on how the beds are. So he's here to give you an update and then with a funding request, and then I can fill any of the blanks about the where and when and all that kind of stuff. So Commissioner, please.
Thank you very much. Mayor Bocinski, members of the city council. As you know, for quite a while, we've been trying to get this law enforcement memorial done, and we're getting very, very close to its completion. We, because of the COVID, you know, I started this project when I was with the sheriff's office, probably five, six years ago, maybe. And because of the COVID, things slowed down, couldn't talk to contractors, couldn't get anything lined up. Well, this year, we are finally rolling and things were going really well. And as you can see from this rendering, this photograph here, this is basically what it's going to look like as you look at it. It is called the Northern Valley Law Enforcement Memorial. And this memorial includes eight counties in northeastern North Dakota and eight counties in northwestern Minnesota and the province of Manitoba. I spent 49 years in law enforcement, nine years in Minnesota and 40 years here. And most of the names that are going to be on this wall, I was around when these officers were killed in the line of duty. If you've ever seen the memorial we have every year in the front lawn of the Grand Forks County Courthouse, it's unbelievable. You know, the Mounties come down from Manitoba, and we have probably the best memorial service in the state of North Dakota. And I've been to quite a few of them. This monument itself is probably going to be the best in the state. As you can see, looking at what's up on the screen right now, it's going to have four flags. The center column is going to say the Northern Valley Law Enforcement Memorial. There's going to be four other sections that go off to the side. One is for federal, one is for North Dakota, one is for Minnesota, and one is for the province of Manitoba. Everything, the flag poles are here, all of it is here. We're storing it right now in the middle here. Let's see here. Okay, so we're going to have benches off to the side, and all those benches are going to be on the concrete. As you can see, the concrete is stamped concrete. It is complete. The footing for the granite is complete. There is a center pod in the middle that is going to have a bronze statue of a police officer down on one knee with a rose. And the arm patches on the bronze statue are going to be that of Grand Forks PD. And the badge is going to be 639 for Officer Cody Holtie, who died in the line of duty here in Grand Forks. What happened recently to delay some of this is that center section that says Northern Valley Law Enforcement Memorial was dropped on shipping and it shattered. So they were, they have to go back to the quarry in Minnesota and get it. So they were talking about, oh, maybe end of October or sometime in November. Well, that gets a little late to be putting granite down. And so we are going to wait until latter May or June of next year to set it. The statue should be done in the next couple of weeks, and it's going to be very nice. I do not want to put the statue on the pedestal in the park at this time. For those of you that don't know where it's at, it's in Optimus Park, between 40th and 47th Avenue, just off on Cherry Street. I feel it would get vandalized sitting there all by itself, and I'd have to get a coat to keep it warm. Anyway, we know what winters like around here. So anyway, that's basically where it's at. And I've given all of you a copy of the latest printout from the Grand Forks Park Board to show where the funds are right now. And we are currently 62,000, what is it, 64, $94.93 in the hole. So we are still going to keep our fundraising efforts going, and I'm sure we're going to meet our goal. And I just appreciate whatever the city can do for us to get this project done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross.
Mayor Bocinski, members of the city council. I think the request for the committee is they are going to do some additional fundraising, but to help close the gap, the request is for an additional $25,000. Previously, this city council has provided $25,000. The additional $25,000, if so approved tonight, would come from the same fund, which would be from the beautification fund, portion of the economic development tax. So that's the request in front of you this evening. So the total funding from the city of Grand Forks would be $50,000 in order of magnitude. When the city participated in the Veterans Park, our contributions between cash and in-kind was in and around $250,000. And both parks are going to be, obviously, the Veterans is a wonderful symbol of the city of Grand Forks. This will be equally. But just so you know, order of magnitude, and obviously, the Veterans Park was a much larger investment than the police or the Northern Valley Law Enforcement Memorial. So just so you, we've done this before. We've done it in a greater degree, but it's, you know, these have been proportional. And again, I think the other part of these is it's a really great partnership between our other local government partners of the county and the park district, working together to get these things done. And I've been around here a long time with city council, and so has Council President Sandy. Our council hasn't been as, in the past, as understanding about these kinds of investments, but it's really heartwarming to know that this current council is really on board to do partnered investments like this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any questions for Mr. Phelan or Commissioner Ross? President Sandy?
So the total they're short right now is 62,000 and change. I'd move we give them 32,000 to get them over halfway to their goal. I move we give them $32,000 to get them over halfway to their goal. That's what I would like to do.
We got a motion and a second, $32,000. Well, that doesn't ever happen, Commissioner Ross. Any further comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I want to thank the council very much for that donation. It's going to be very nice, you're going to be very impressed when you see it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for action items, we move on to six information items.
6.1 is the investment portfolio summary as of August 31st.
Thank you. And item seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1 is the vendor list as is presented.
Got a motion to approve the vendor list, got a motion, President Sandy, second from Mr. Kavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Phelan, any comments this evening?
Yeah, just a few comments. Some of the follow-up from the, some of the citizenry comments, I'll answer some of those questions. As you recall, we did, the city council did approve agreement with Agassiz Rural Water to move that line, that water line, so we can reconnect them in the interim. So as you recall, there was a rural water line that went down the middle up, for whatever reason, because it was probably easy back in the day, right down the middle of the section where Fu Fang. And so this city council agreed to pay to move that line within the right of way to get them hooked up in the interim. So we certainly are providing, looking to provide water distribution lines longer term over the next two to three years, but this is an interim measure. Agassiz Rural Water ended up providing some beds, and Dan's Excavating was the lowest bed, so that's the group that's out there. It's, they're being directed by Agassiz Rural Water, but through our agreement, we are going to reimburse them for that work. Number two, it was mentioned that Terricon's been out there. Terricon is a geotechnical consultant, and so they're drilling borings. Those are, as per Fu Fang USA has asked for those various. We have also been out there previously, I was just talking to our city engineer, Al Grasser. Earlier this year, we were out there doing geotechnical studies on the right of way, too. So we've both been out there, but I think most recently at the C, it's been Fu Fang USA directing that work. The other question came on, and this has come up at a series of meetings, wastewater treatment plant biosolids, that will be a very important part. Not only, we've talked about their pretreatment system's going to be really important, that's going to play critically into our wastewater treatment plant, so we're really going to pay special attention to that. We don't have final details, but we have provided you some concepts. Other concepts we've provided you, when you have wastewater treatment plants, you have what they call biosolids, which is a friendlier way to say sludge. And so that'll be another important part of that, because it'll be another permitting thing that's all part of the development agreement, where they're going to have to get permits to whether they land apply, which is going to be the 1A move, is try to land apply it to agricultural. There are rules and regulations on which you can and cannot do, as you can probably imagine, whether that's in the state of Minnesota or the state of North Dakota, you're going to do that. If the landfill is used as a backup, our solid waste landfill, we will have to look within our permit about whether we can accept it, how much, does it require a permit modification? So none of these things that happen are going to sneak by anybody, just so you know that. There's going to be lots of due diligence that are going to be on the state permitting agencies who will be involved, and there may even be public curious regarding that. Just so you know, there's lots of work to be done. We don't have those studies in hand or what they plan to do. But more to come on those, we're tracking those. I want to thank the city council and the department hats on the budget, and again, Council President Sandy and Vice President Weber, you've been around here a long time, so we really do appreciate your, just your professionalism and working with the city administration on the budget, it is quite appreciated. And even when we may have disagreements, it's not personal, it's trying to be constructive. So thank you for, really, the positive work regarding the budget and the trust in us to deliver the budget that we think we need here for the city of Grand Forks. So thank you very much. Also want to give a big shout out to Tangi and Gretchen are here from the Human Resources Department, going ahead with Brown and Brown. Good move, Tangi, thank you for that. And I want to point out, as Mr. Weigl pointed out, it's not, the city participates in the benefit of health insurance, but when they talked about vision and they talk about dental, those are all paid solely by the city employees. And so those reductions are impacting employees directly. We're certainly administering those types of benefits and doing those sorts of things, but those are benefits that really hit city employees in a positive way. And some of those other services that were discussed, like EAP, if life insurance, those are programs that the city of Grand Forks participates in. And so I think even in those programs, we've received some reduction. So I think all around, thanks to our really proactive HR department, really proud of what they've brought back to you. I think it's going to be great for the city and great for the employees, and I think overall, we're probably going to get better benefits at a lower cost, so a win-win. So thank you all for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. We're going to move on to council members and mayor comments. Let's start with Mr. Weigl, any comments this evening?
Just real quick, Mayor, just thank you to Bob. I'm going to call him Bob Ross, because I've known him since I was a kid, but Bob's done a ton of work on this project, and I don't know that he gets enough credit for all that he's accomplished, and just really thankful for his work on the law enforcement memorial.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl. Ms. Osowski, any comments? Ms. Lonsky, Mr. Kavami, any comments this evening?
Just echo what Danny said, thanks to Bob, thanks to the park district, and thanks to the county commission.
All right, Mr. Veen, any comments this evening? He's driving, I think, so we'll let him continue. Vice President Weber.
If I may quickly, just a couple questions, Mr. Mayor. Todd, thanks for addressing the issues that came up during the citizens' comments. Often, these things are presented as though we never thought of them, and almost all of these things are in the development agreement, and we continue to work on that. Regarding the biosolids disposal, any idea when, because we don't have that data yet, we're waiting for that data. And certainly, if we learn something catastrophic there, we take a very hard look at everything we've been doing, but we're looking at that. Any idea when we could anticipate those numbers?
Mayor Bochinski, Council Vice President Weber. I think soon. I think, based on our most recent meetings with Fu Fang USA, I think, number one, the air permit is going to get submitted relatively soon, so we will be able to start working on that. Obviously, the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality will also, so I think that's soon. I think also the solids plan is super important to us, too, that we can start sharing that and its impact, too. So those will be two reports that will go to our state agencies for review, but obviously, if they want to use city facilities, or, you know, there's going to be planning and zoning changes, all those things are going to require a lot of heavy lifting.
Right, great, thanks for the, Mayor, you mentioned the other evening that increasingly we're in a position where if we do get any troubling news, things have moved along so far that we're in good shape to make sure that these issues are addressed in a way that's necessary and beneficial for the city. Nothing but, from what I could tell, great news from the benefits consultant report across the port. Nice to hear so much good news there. How do we pay for that consultant report? What pot of money does that come out of? Is that just? Thanks.
Mayor Bochinski, Council Vice President Weber, that comes out of administrative fees are built into the rates.
Very good, thanks. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. President Sandy, any comments this evening?
Thank you. I noticed Mr. Veen unmuted himself, so I don't know if he had something that he wanted to say, and then he went back unmute. I can.
I'm back to unmuted, yes, I appreciate. No, I have no additional comment, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. President Sandy, was that your only comment tonight?
No, I'm curious if there's any, is there any legal reason why, when we take a roll call vote, we start with Ward 1 and go to Ward 7 versus 7 to 1 versus random? Because I believe that it might put undue pressure on people at the far end when they're voting, if every time they're the ones that are having to make the final determination. If there is no legal reason, I would suggest perhaps we draw names at random as we're doing roll call votes. I certainly don't want to add any complexity to this, but sometimes that might actually affect how people vote.
We could have people pull out of a cup when they start, if you wish.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor. You did a really good, you and Marine and the team, you guys did a really good job on the budget with our, with the finance folks, and certainly appreciate all the work done on the salary plan. We, it actually is really fun working with people that you trust. It makes it, this job so much easier. So thank you.
Thank you. And it has been a lot of work on the voting thing. We could certainly do votes that, you know, spoken first. I mean, then we have people here and half here, half not, and we don't know if they're on, it becomes more complicated, too. And if they are close, you know, you'd imagine the person's going to keep their vote regardless, but something to consider. I just want to also thank staff, I think it's a good budget. I think we have to continue the education that the city is doing what we can to become more efficient. When you see a large increase from the schools, when you see an increase from the county, we've become smaller piece of that tax pile. And just a couple of years ago, we were at 34%. We are getting closer to 30%, and we'll be in the 20s very soon, and I hope we can continue that efficiency. We do not get to control the other entities, they set their own budget, they set their own mill rate, some of that goes to vote, some of it doesn't. But just want to thank the city for the continued efficiencies and thank the staff for all their work on this budget. That's all I've got for this evening, so if you're looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn from Mr. Kavami, second from President Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously, we are adjourned.